Okay, everybody ready? Welcome. Let's call it to order. City Clerk, do you want to do the roll call?
Councilmember, Agency Director, Authority Member Molly.
Present.
Man.
I'm present.
Underwood Jacobs.
Present.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chairman Chris.
Present.
Mayor Chairman Paris.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Underwood Jacobs, you all see her on television?
I did, several times.
She was a rock star last week.
I saw her numerous times, and she even signed, autographed all the pictures.
I was, I was, I was proud, actually. I didn't see Frank, though, was he there?
Yes, he was there. Yeah, thank you for feeling proud.
Who are you supporting?
My family.
Okay. The presentation for Detective Speed is being postponed until August 9th. Oh, that's right. How did I skip by that? Well, I can still announce the change in the agenda. Detective Speed and all deputies have been working 12-hour shifts due to the sand fire. Sand, fire. We salute all of them for their efforts and will recognize Detective Speed on the August 9th City Council meeting. So Captain, why aren't you fighting the fire? And why aren't you fighting the fire? I mean, what did you guys do? Okay, who's doing the invocation? I don't see. No one signed up to do the invocation.
Under the policy, it would be appropriate for you to select from the council members.
What?
Under the policy, it's appropriate for you to select from the council members.
So who would like to?
Randy.
Randy, okay.
Bow your heads. Thank you, God, for your blessings on our city. Thank you for guiding staff and preparing the meeting. Thank you for the City Council and the decisions that they make and guide their decisions. God, we ask that you hold fast the family and friends of those slain in Dallas. Brett Thompson, Patrick Zamperera, Michael Crowe, Sergeant Michael Smith, our own Laura Athrins in Baton Rouge, Montell Jackson, Matthew Gerald, Brad Garofla. God, we thank you for these centurions that stand between us and the abyss. We thank you for the firefighters on the lines protecting us from the fire that's raging so close. And we ask you to comfort the families and usher in your love for them. I pray for blessings on our troops and their families. And Lord, let us remember Louis Bozzi again, and we ask that you comfort his family and friends, and for welcoming Sharon Runner into your outstretched arms for her good and faithful service to you. I pray in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Ken, you want to lead the pledge?
Sure. Everybody would face the flag, put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. City Manager, anything to be removed?
No, sir, but we do need to make one correction on CC 3. I apologize for the typo. It should be the June monthly report on investments, not May.
It's my son, what do I do? Should I take, take a moment to talk to my son?
Take the call, put it on, put it on speaker, too.
So, hey, dog, I'm at the City Council meeting, and you're on the speaker, so what do you got to say?
I am.
Yeah.
That's exciting.
It's an informal night.
Am I a telecaster or whatever?
What?
Am I being, am I on the video for the council meeting right now?
Right, right now, it'll be broadcast throughout the world.
Is there anything you need me to tell the city? Tell the city?
No, do you need anything as an emergency? Can I call you back?
Yeah, I guess so.
Love you. I'll call you when it's over.
I love you, I'll talk to you later.
Bye-bye. He doesn't call too often. One time he called, he's in Istanbul, because he went to go see the riots. He got there, saw the riots, got scared to death, but didn't have enough money to come home.
Did you raise his allowance?
No, I, I didn't take the call. That's why I take this call now.
Didn't you, didn't you say he also didn't tell you he was going to Istanbul?
Didn't tell me he was going either. He was supposed to be in London going to law school. But he, kill, you gotta watch. All right, now where were we?
We're at the minutes.
Huh?
M1.
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 Okay, is there a motion?
Motion to approve M1.
I'll second.
Are you gonna abstain?
What? I won't, so I gotta abstain.
Yes.
Okay. All opposed?
Yes.
Mayor Paris, you abstained, is that correct?
That's right, I abstained, but I don't know what Molly's doing here. So it's, it's three to one. Three in fa, no, two in favor, three in favor, one opposed, one abstention. We'll have an opening here real soon if somebody wants to.
So we ended up with four yeses and an abstention, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay. Any items on the consent calendar?
We need to pull CC 4 and CC 6.
As for the record, Mayor Paris, CC 6, I need to recuse myself. Someone says I'm in close proximity with property to the project.
I'll make a motion that we accept the consent calendar as currently comprised pulling CC 4, CC 6.
Second then, let's vote. It's unanimous. Okay.
Can't we take these one at a time?
Yeah, CC 4, Fran.
Good afternoon, Mayor Paris, Vice Mayor Chris, council members, ladies and gentlemen. I think, I'm not sure if I'm speaking in the right way to say it, but on CC 4, we got from Lassa, 47,000 some odd dollars, right? For the year for the homeless? Seventy-six, four-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars.
I think they left a zero off that.
Seventy-six thousand, four-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars.
That was a joke, Fran, you were supposed to laugh.
Now, this money that we received here has nothing to do with that million dollars that we received from, now, my question is, I understand that seventy-six thousand, four-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars is for the shelters as what we're doing for the people now. The million dollars, I know I had brought it up before, and it was stipulated it was going to be used to buy or to put down property for the, for the building that was stipulated for. But my question is, was, I know, that million dollars, couldn't it be used now for the homeless and, because to do what we want to, well, I include myself in it, but what we want to do as far as the taxes on the properties is going to take, like you said, it's a 20-year proposition. And so in that interim, what's going to happen to all the monies that are going to be collected, and how is it going to be dispersed?
There's a lot of questions, Joe.
First thing, we ought to use that million to buy the property in Palmdale for the homeless shelter.
In Palmdale?
You think that's a good idea?
Palmdale?
That's another joke, Fran.
Man, okay. Don't scare me like that, I'm Lancaster, I'm Lancaster 100%.
I'm not joking. I think that's a good idea.
The seventy-six thousand.
You know what we could do, divide the good on this side and the, never mind. So I got away from my question, but I, I think I made my point, and I don't know what should be done about it, or how, whatever, but I'm just speaking my, voicing out my opinion on it.
Marvin, Marvin will answer you in all seriousness.
The seventy-six thousand is for services that have already been rendered as far as for the winter shelter. Okay, so those have already been put out. That's money that's already been spent, they're just reimbursing everybody for the money that was there. The million dollars, we're still looking at property, we're still looking for everything, but it'll take 15 million to build the shelter, plus the law enforcement portion of it, plus the running of the portion of what we do to do it. So the million dollars, we can't, you know, make just a million dollars work, if that was your question. Just the million dollars that they gave us is to kind of prime the pump, to look for the property, so we can hit the ground running when it passes in October.
Okay, but then meanwhile, how are we, how are we going to subsidize our homeless if, you know, we're having money problems? What are we going to do about that?
The, the plan is, if the assessment district goes through, then we'll have or take in approximately four million dollars total.
Is that the first year?
That is every year for 20 years. We will do a bond, on the bond, we will do about a 12 to 15 million dollar homeless shelter that will have 400 to 600 people. On that, we'll have, it'll be, say, 15 million dollars. The debt load on that is 1.3 to 1.5 million per year. We need another million dollars to run the shelter with, per year, and which will leave us a million dollars, a million five for the Sheriff Department. So we're going to hire four extra cars, and that will be their duty is to get off the panhandlers and the aggressive people, and give them the opportunity to go into the homeless shelter.
Okay, so in other words, we're going to get a bond to be able to build this property first, and we pay it as we go along, as we get the tax.
It's a debt load, the, the assessment district will pay the debt load, and as soon as it passes in October, then the city can go out, we'll front the money. We should be able to do all this within the first year.
Okay, good, because a lot of people are asking me, well, what about the homeless? They get this money, and then they don't do anything with it. But then I started thinking about it myself, and I figured there was something like that, but I said, I better ask, because I don't know all the answers. I tried to, though.
Fran, we'll be glad to come over to your complex and do a presentation for you, if you'd like.
At the senior center?
Sure, sure.
Good, that would be really, really super great.
Just set it up with Mark, and we'll come over and do one for you and answer all the questions that they have.
Good, okay.
Okay.
Thank you very, very much.
He's a prince, didn't I tell you?
Thank you, guys.
He doesn't take my call.
And gals.
There's a rule, you always take your wife and kids' call. Always.
I agree.
Let's vote. Do anybody think that's a good idea? All right. CC 6.
No, hang on. Well, we're going to take them consecutive, then I'll step out on CC 6.
Oh, we got to vote on CC 4, that's right.
We can vote on both of them if he steps out.
Go ahead and step out, we'll do a vote.
I move we approve CC 4 and CC 6.
Second then? Unanimous.
With Ken.
Ken?
With Ken Manrakusing himself.
Right. Okay, new business, item one. Any speaker votes? Yeah, I want to hear it anyway.
Mayor Paris and members of the City Council, I'd like to give you a brief rundown this evening of the work programs that the Planning Commission is currently involved with. And they're going to be involved with them really for pretty much the balance of the year of 2016. And includes a combination of assignments that, some of which have been directed by the City Council, others initiated by the Commission themselves. And I, I think when you, when you kind of understand the breadth of the things they're working on and the importance of these issues, it will help reemphasize how important the work is that they do for the citizens of the city. One of the first ones that they're on right now is the alcohol ordinance. As you recall, that was an item that came before you, you adopted an ordinance, but gave an opportunity for a working group to see if there were any kinds of changes that could be adopted to that. Both the Chair of the Planning Commission, as well as the Chair of the Criminal Justice Commission, are a part of that working group. It also includes representatives from the business community, and of course, city staff to help guide them. The working group has already met once, and it is scheduled to have two meetings in August where they will work to see what they can put together as an alternative, potentially, to what was adopted. That is going to go back to the Planning Commission, we believe, in September for their review and their consideration. And of course, once they have a chance to look at that, as well as the Criminal Justice Commission, there would be some kind of recommendation coming forth from them to you as a council. Recreational marijuana, as you're aware, there is an initiative on the November ballot that would legalize that within California. The Commission has already received from the city's legal side a background presentation on this issue at their July meeting, and they are going to be reviewing the provisions of the ballot initiative to consider what kinds of potential regulations could be placed relative to cultivation, dispensaries and retail sales, licensing procedures, and of course, fees and revenue. And they are hopeful that they will be able to present a report back to the City Council in October or November, certainly coinciding with what the vote would be on the initiative itself. And as you can well imagine, even at that initial discussion, there are a lot of issues that they're going to be working with on that, and they're quite ready to tackle that. One of the other things that they have begun work on is the ZNE housing code. As you may recall, the council has asked them to look at the zero net energy provisions that the state of California is looking to adopt in several years, and seeing whether or not that is something that we might want to consider adopting actually early as part of a reach code. They also discussed that at their July meeting. They're going to be reviewing those potential provisions and seeing what that would take in order for someone to comply with it as part of that review. And they've asked staff to make sure that we engage various stakeholders in that effort. That would include, of course, housing developers, architects and designers, representative from the Building Industry Association. This approach is very similar to what the Commission did several years ago. Commissioner, or at that time Commissioner Molly was a part of the Commission at that time, where they reviewed very thoroughly whether or not we ought to require solar energy for new residential development. And I think they're going to put the same kind of effort into this that they did at that time. And they are looking for late this year to be able to provide a recommendation back to the council as to how to move forward on this. The other thing that they're working on is an elimination of minimum parking requirements. The Commission really began evaluating this potential in March. They've asked for a lot of information and report from staff on this, and at their May meeting, they directed us to prepare an ordinance for their consideration. They are scheduled to consider that ordinance at their August meeting, that would be August the 15th. Assuming they are comfortable with taking action and making a recommendation at that time, you will have that item in front of you most likely in September. There are a couple of other things that they're going to be involved with reviewing that are, that are still in the draft stages at a staff level, but are going to be coming forward to them in the, in the relatively near future. One of those is the draft citywide safe routes to school master plan. As you may recall, the city was fortunate to get grant funding to prepare a safe routes to school plan for every public school in the city of Lancaster. And this is really a plan as to how students, parents can safely arrive at school, safely get home, whether they're driving, walking, biking, or rolling in some way. We expect that probably about November, the Commission is going to get that report and begin to look at that. Ultimately, they will make a recommendation to the City Council on whether and how to adopt that citywide plan. That plan would become the basis for future grants and other types of funding to improve our situation around schools for traffic calming, pedestrian access, bicycle facilities, and so forth. They are also going to be seeing the draft master plan of complete streets. And this is a plan that really builds on the city's adopted master plan of trails and bikeways. Once again, looking at ways to try and create a safer community in terms of driving, walking, biking. You see some of the things that we adopted as part of the master plan of trails and bikeways being implemented at various locations throughout the city. This plan would build on that and provide us a real roadmap into the future to make sure that not only are our streets safer, but they are sized appropriately so that their economic return and their economic cost is more in balance. So that's really a rundown on the things that they're going to be doing. As you can see, it's a very ambitious and full schedule. Staff is well-prepared to work with them on this, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, and of course, the Vice Chair of the Commission, Randy Hall, is also present.
Any questions?
I do. Brian, you said you're bringing all the stakeholders there for the net zero. Are you also bringing financial people in so you can see the, the difference in it financially as far as to be able to qualify for a loan, the differences?
Okay, in terms of the alcohol?
No, it's the net zero.
Oh, the net zero one. Yes, that's one of the things that, that we have to take a look at, and I think that's a very, very important point that you brought up. What we found in going through this process is that certain things appraise into the value of housing, because the, the lenders, they can, they can see value to them. Other things don't as well. And of course, the building community is highly sensitive to that, as is the real estate community. So that's one of the things that I think the Commission's going to take a close look at. And when they went through the effort on requiring solar, one of the things that I think was a very big factor in them recommending going forward with that was that the information that came out of the building industry was, oh yeah, there's absolute value in this kind of thing, and the lenders and the appraisers recognize that value. So thank you, that's a very valid point.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you, we'll receive and file the report. New business, item two, Lee Durico.
Good evening, Mayor Paris, Vice Mayor Chris, council members and commissioners. Before you, staff is recommending to receive public comment and approved filing for the 2016 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, which is commonly known as the JAG Grant, in the amount of $68,000, $68,883. There is no fiscal impact, because all appropriations are supplied by the Department of Justice, so we don't have to supply matching funds as it relates to this grant. Background on this grant is the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program allows states and local governments to support a broad range of activities to prevent and control crime and to improve the criminal justice system. The focus areas are law enforcement programs, prosecution and court programs, prevention and education programs, corrections and community corrections programs, drug treatment and enforcement programs. If awarded, the 2016 JAG grant funds can be used at any of the six proposed areas to pay for personnel, programs, and equipment. If approved by the council, staff is proposing to utilize the grant funds for Community Support and Good Citizen Program, which is already in place now, which relates to several juvenile diversion programs that we're supporting here at the city of Lancaster and in the community. Those being teen court, community youth court, as well as the AV Education Alliance Anti-Truancy Program currently at Annalou Valley High School. For the grant, we've received grant funds every year from JAG since my time at the city, since 2009. The first several years, we use them for more of our reentry and intervention model as it related to AB 109, an adult reentry into the community. The last two years, we've used it to, in support of youth diversion programs, especially now in light of what's happening within the juvenile justice system. And also, it's been very successful in the utilization of our anti-truancy program at AV High School. We've had over 70% turnaround in student attendance, which also has had an impact on the local crime rate for daytime crime in the area in Dryer for that school.
What do you mean 70%? Explain that.
70% of, of the students, or of 70% of the 100% of students who have gone into the program have increased their, excuse me, their attendance in school. So in other words, some of them up to 100% attendance, some vary in that percentage to 50 or 70% improvement. But overall, 70%, 70% of the students for the last two years who have participated has attendance as approved.
Thank you. What about the other 30%?
Working on that, sir. Okay? Actually, we keep a lot more kids in the program and follow them through, even beyond completion. There's also things we're doing with support services for families and other issues that relate. Especially, it's interesting to see, as you get to know these kids, you go into their homes, you meet their parents, some of the things that they're struggling with. Some kids don't attend school just because they don't have clothes to wear. They are hungry, they have other issues that are going on, they have to watch their siblings, there's all kinds of things. It's not always a case of just being defiant and not wanting to attend school.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Durico.
Thank you, Mr. Durico.
Received and filed. We have to...
We need to take a vote on this one, yeah.
Okay. We really got to vote to whether or not we want to accept money.
To apply for money.
Motion to approve, NB two.
I'll second that.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. Roger, you sure you don't want to give that money back? I'm having too much fun, I agree. All right. NB three, Proposition A Funds.
Mayor Paris, city council members, I'm here before you, pinch hitting for Barbara Boswell. Before you is a recommendation to exchange city of Lancaster Proposition A Funds for general fund from the city of Commerce at a 70% rate. Cities, as you well know, and I think the public does, have multiple funding sources, some that are very restrictive, some that are not restrictive at all, general fund being one of them, which could play for, pay for police protection, parks programs, et cetera. Through good fiscal management by AVTA and the city, we have a fund source which is difficult to use, Proposition A. It's restricted to transit services where there are other funds to use, can't be used on roads, it could be used on a very few things, while the city has a need for general fund. General fund, in this case, we would propose is going to come into the reserves, replenish the reserves. And there's a couple of projects that the council just approved at your budget, chief among them, which is smart cities. We put a little bit to prime the pump, as someone said, but that's going to require a lot more. Based on that, and we haven't done this in the past history, we do not use these funds for ongoing operations. This is a one-time amount. It's essentially at a discount, changing a restrictive fund to a non-restrictive fund. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are we laundering money?
Pretty much. That made it in my first cut, but I cut that part out. No, no. That's a good point, though, that this is a trade that is contemplated and allowed by Metro, and other cities have taken advantage. Our city has been more aggressive than most in doing so over the years.
I'm not going to jail for this, am I?
You would look great in orange, but no.
You watch that show, do you? Allison, I don't watch that show.
All right. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve, NB three.
Oh, we have a speaker card.
Oh, you have a speaker card. Rosemary, is it Giselle? Geron? I can't read the... So you tell me, is this laundering?
What do you mean by that?
Are we laundering the money?
Well, my name is Rosemary Geron. I am 16 years old, and I'm taking political science in college for ABC. And my assignment was to ask you a question today. And my question for this is, he said that this is a one-time thing. How will it help the city if it's only one time?
First off, I... It might put the council in jail. Some people would think that'd be an improvement.
First off, I know everyone's impressed that you're 16 and in college. Most of us weren't. And even better, that you asked an intelligent question that we couldn't answer, but... Actually, that's a very intelligent question, because when cities get in trouble, they use one-time funds for an ongoing operation. So example, if you use this and you had a million-dollar pool that you had to fund every year for operations, and you said, we're going to operate a pool with this money, this money's not going to come again next year. So it's a one-time source. Money like transportation funds, which we get money every year for roads, you can have an ongoing road program where you may do roads, $10 million worth of roads every year because you know that's an ongoing revenue source. This is a one-time revenue source. But that is how cities get in trouble, using one-time funds for ongoing operations.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
So are you a SOAR student?
No, I'm not. I'm in Coors Hill.
You're in Coors Hill? And you're in AV College, too?
Yes.
Wow. We should make her an intern, you know that. See him at the end of... You want to be an intern for the city?
Yes.
See him. Did you talk about the unpaid portion of that? Don't answer until you hear that part.
That's impressive.
Motion to approve, NB three.
I'll second that.
In favor? Are you in a hurry today, or is that it?
No, I was just moving you along.
You didn't imply that he was slow.
All right. My wife's in China, so I know she's not watching the television, so I tend to get a little sporty. I don't have to go home and listen to it, you know? All right. City Council Agenda. Update regarding city parcel tax.
Marvin Crist. We did have a busy week. We met with several organizations. We were trying to get them to look at whether to sign in on a, is it approval or the letter of recommendation?
Argument for.
Argument for. And there was also, we offered them an argument against. So we did talk to the chamber, we talked to the Board of Realtors, we talked to Board of Trade, we talked to several other organizations. We were able to get to sign on the argument for. Our mayor signed on, the chamber signed on, the Ministerial Association signed on, the Criminal Justice had a special meeting, which they signed on to it, and the largest tax advocate that we've ever had in the valley, George Runner, signed on to it to, that they're all for it, that it's a good thing to do. So it was a busy week in that department, and we did have, Mark was at the Board of Trade, tried diligently to, we had time limits that we had to do, we were forced with time limits. So the Board of Trade did come back to us and say that they would sign, but we had already reached our limit of five at that time. So we thanked the Board of Trade for their, what they did to try to get the ability to sign it. They went to all their membership and did that, which the chamber did, and the Realtors couldn't pull it off in time to do, so, but the other ones were very good in doing it. So that's that.
That's impressive. It really is. You got a group of people signing off on this, I wouldn't have expected to. Brendan, have the name missed, the Marvin Crist Homeless Shelter.
Yeah.
Actually...
Mayor Paris, don't you think that when you stop and take a look at those entities that he spoke of, don't you think ultimately this is just good overall? I mean, it's great for business. I couldn't see why those guys wouldn't do that.
Well, because I just haven't seen them make intelligence as well.
And that's why I did the presentation.
I'm not even going to try to clean that up, it just came out. All right. Good, thank you, Marvin. Report on the activities of the Antelope Valley Transit Authority.
Angela, you want to?
Today, we heard a presentation on code of conduct for passengers to ensure their safety and security while they're being a passenger on the AVTA. We also talked about the AVTA to support the city of Lancaster with the cleaning and maintenance of bus stops and shelters, which will produce approximately $80,000 to $90,000 in reduced fees for the city of Lancaster.
So how was the code of conduct? Were they approved?
Well, there was one section that they're going to come back and redo for us, because there was a question that came up over the verbiage, and council is going to make sure that we are doing the correct thing, that what we're wanting to have written is appropriate. So we're going to come back together again for next month. But overall, the presentations were very nicely done.
Had to do with weapons, and it had to do with special dogs that were allowed on the bus. For what purpose are they allowed, and can the driver ask them what the dog's on the bus for? So...
Anyway, you're not going to be taking people's guns away on the bus, are you?
Hopefully, they're not getting on the bus with guns.
Marvin, I didn't know you were anti-gun.
I'm not. I'm anti-getting on the bus with a gun.
What do you think of that, Randy? You think Marvin's lost sight of the Second Amendment?
No, but I liked your idea about the homeless shelter being built in Palmdale, and I think that's a brilliant idea.
See, you all thought that was a stupid idea. Turns out, it's a smart idea, isn't it?
He can't vote.
All right. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
Of course.
When's Carol getting back?
City Manager, any announcements?
Yes, we have a couple. We have a couple of videos, but before that, I'd like to commend the Boulevard Association. They've really been hitting their stride recently with Angela Riley and their new board. They've done a lot of things. They're going to announce an ambassador program. They have a really good newsletter that they keep everyone informed. One of the things that I was truly impressed with is they jumped on the whole Pokemon Go thing right away in terms of encouraging people to come. They didn't put roadblocks up, they said, come on in. A lot of them stay open till late at night to serve, and it's exactly what it should be. It's an active group of small business people working together to enhance their collective. It really was very impressive. So I want to commend them for their efforts and our staff for that. We have two videos. The first one we're going to show is the Lancaster Jethawks 20th Anniversary Season. I think beyond baseball, which the Jethawks are impressive, the entire starting infield for the Houston Astros were Jethawks within the last three years. They do a lot for the community, so, and it's really fun out there right now. So we have a short video on the Jethawks. The city of Lancaster joins the Lancaster Jethawks in celebrating the team's 20th anniversary. Established in 1996, the Lancaster Jethawks have amassed more than 1,000 victories, as well as two California League Championships. The first in 2012, then again in 2014. Over the course of history, the Jethawks have played host to more than 100 current and former Major League Baseball players. Sports bring communities together. In addition to providing family-friendly fun and entertainment, the Lancaster Jethawks have dedicated much time and resources to serving our community. The organization has hosted numerous community events, such as the Laps for Livers C-5K. More recently, the Jethawks also partnered with the city on the annual Fill the Drafts Craft Beer Festival. The team has been and continues to be active amongst charitable organizations, including the Boys and Girls Club, Child Care Resource Center, the Antelope Valley Special Olympics, and Grace Resource Center. The Jethawks have also served alongside city staff and community volunteers at the annual Martin Luther King Jr. Day of Service. Our Jethawks have never been short on accomplishments, both on and off the field. The city of Lancaster congratulates the team on its 20th anniversary, and we look forward to being their home for many years to come. And our next video, we have put a lot of work, Joe and the communications staff, and in particular, our younger staff, of doing lots of videos on YouTube, Vimeo, and other platforms, which I can't pronounce, but we have a lot of content out there on the internet, and it's through the work of our young staff. So this is their idea how to promote people looking at that, with our very own Alyssa.
Oh, hey, I didn't see you there. Now, I know what you're thinking. Aren't you that girl from all those City of Lancaster YouTube videos? And you know what? You'd be right. Yeah, I'd say I'm pretty famous now. Here you go, miss. Do I know you? But did you know that you could see even more of me by visiting the City of Lancaster's official Vimeo page? There you'll find tons of content, including views, interviews, and even event coverage. And of course, you'll see more of yours truly, me. Go ahead and visit vimeo.com/cityoflancasterca to see all of the works of art we've uploaded for you. Now, if you'll excuse me, I have lunch meeting with Michael Bay.
Any comments?
None from me. Did she intern for you? Did she or didn't she? Did she? You didn't intern for me, did you? No. I didn't hear that.
She's saying intern for communications before being hired on? I think there was a slight dig in Marv's comment there somewhere.
I didn't pick it up?
Carol would have.
All right. Anita Paul, you're on. You're the first one, so make this good. This has to be riveting.
Good evening, members of the council. My name's Anita Paul, and I'm taking a political science class, so I need to come to a meeting and introduce myself.
That's it?
That's it.
You don't have anything to tell us, or ask us, or anything?
I want to thank you for doing the prayer before the meeting started. I really like that they do that. It's not often that happens.
Thank you.
That's it.
You did good.
Thank you.
Oh, that's right, the city clerk has to read.
This is the time to address the city council agency and authority on non-agendized matters. Speaker cards can be found on the back table of the council chambers. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. State law prohibits the city council from taking action on items not on the agenda, and your matter may be referred to the city manager.
Thank you. You have a speech for us, right?
No. I'm also in the same class as Anita Paul, and our assignment was just to come here and be in a meeting or a school board meeting. And so listen to what you guys have to say, and then we have to write a paper on what we got from the meeting.
And you're not even supposed to fake a question or anything?
No.
You just, really?
Well, we were supposed to take notes, and then we had to write down all of your guys' names, and then introduce ourselves, and...
So did you all write down how the mayor is incredibly funny, and interesting, and exciting?
I did, of course. How could I forget?
And did you also write down that the vice mayor, a little bit, not so much?
Never.
Did you write down, you hope his wife's coming back soon?
God meant us to be a couple.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
You dressed for the occasion.
Yeah, I tried. I get out once in a while. Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, city manager, department heads. My name's Nick Klein. I'm a student of political science, and I'm here on a research assignment. It was really good to be able to come out to one of these and see the transparency of the city to the public. It's cool that you guys do that. You meet out with everyone, and it's really cool to just be able to see the transparency there, just like a one-on-one, everyone can ask questions, and you're just straight up about it. Appreciate that.
You know, unfortunately, God created me without the ability to filter what I'm thinking. And so, you get a transparent counsel.
That's a very good thing.
Thanks.
Well, thank you.
All right. Where's Caesar? Where'd Caesar go? He chickened out. He fled. Report him to his teacher. You know, quite honestly, when I was in AV college, I couldn't have got up there and done that. That'd have been scary.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm also a student of political science, and just like everybody else, my assignment is to come up here to do research and be able to, well, see what the city council is about. And this is my first time coming here, so it's actually a new experience for me.
So what'd you think?
It's different. It's greater. Honestly, just like was mentioned before, I wasn't expecting a prayer in the beginning. I do appreciate that. And I was surprised at first, but I'm glad that's still around.
Okay. You think we were having too much fun?
No, no.
Good.
I'm glad it's a little bit more relaxed than I was expecting. I was expecting it to be a lot more uptight.
Great.
If you had to give it...
What are you guys laughing about?
We haven't been uptight for five years here.
Nathan, if you had to give us a grade, what would it be? I don't like giving grades.
Well, we didn't do much. There wasn't much on the calendar, so it would be hard to do that.
Well, it was my first experience, so I didn't even know what was going to be expected here, so I had no idea what was going to be going on.
You know, we deliberately try to keep it up, upbeat and fun, and there's a reason for that, is people make better decisions if they're up, if they're happy. It's when people get real toxic that the decisions get very narrow, and you end up making terrible decisions. That's why I always try to monitor how I let people speak, because I don't want the people who bring it down to bring down the whole room, because then the quality of our decisions diminishes. So you know there's a method to my madness. Thanks.
All right, thank you.
Which brings me to Wally Melendez. Good evening.
City council, staff, people of Lancaster. I saw something very interesting in the paper the other day, and I'm sorry if I throw a little bit of water on you there, Paris, but I saw in the paper that certain cities, they elect a city council at large, everyone. No mayor position is elected. And what the city council does after they're elected, the five, is they elect a mayor for one year out of the five. So everybody, all five, get a chance to be the president of the meeting, to preside over the meeting for one year, and I thought that was kind of interesting.
What's he saying?
I don't know. Keep talking, Wally.
But let me get to my subject, okay? I frequently talk about this intersection on Jay and Sierra Avenue, and I frequently come to these meetings, and I've mentioned that the SCOP laws there, when they stop there at that light, almost all the time, they cross the line. They never stop behind the white line. And the people that are crossing the street, they got to maneuver between those hot wheels in front. Well, and guess what? Just the other day, I saw a sheriff do it too. I said, "What? Even a sheriff does it?" And I said, "Well, that's why we got all this SCOP laws, because they see that, and they say, 'Well, if the sheriff does it, we can do it too.'" And speaking about everybody getting a chance to be presided over the meeting. So that's what I normally talk about, and I've got 40 seconds.
Thank God.
It's been so hot out there, and I can understand why you all, everybody here, is so giddy because of the heat. But almost everybody here drives in an air-conditioned car. Like, I had a very good friend of mine, and she used to say, "I love the desert. I love the desert." And I said, "Well, you stay in an air-conditioned home all day, you ride around in your air-conditioned car all day, you never get out in the heat while you're out there planting tomatoes." How can you say you love the desert if you're never in it?
Thank you. The problem with the weather is Councilwoman Underwood Jacobs. I put her in charge of the weather, and she went off to the Republican Convention. She just didn't do her job, and as a result, we've been sweltering. But Wally, I'll appoint somebody else next week, and maybe we can bring the temperatures down, okay? Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council. My name is Juan Leo, and I'm here quite troubled, and I'm sorry if I stutter, and it's my first time up here, so at a city council meeting, strip over my own words. I wanted to speak to you, Mr. Mayor, about some disturbing practices that occurred on my home and in my neighborhood concerning a Lancaster group home. I had several visits. There were several visits to my home over a three-month period, about 14 phone calls. 14 resulted in a false arrest and then malicious prosecution, what I feel was malicious prosecution, only to have my case and every charge dismissed. Now, when I wanted to call city hall with legal inquiry concerning that and many other matters, such as violations of law, I got quite a disturbing answer from Deputy Jordan and a couple of his deputy partners stating, "You've already..." I don't have the script, not necessarily the script, the transcript, I'm sorry. Right in front of me at this time, but I can, I believe I may have emailed some of it to city hall already, stating such as, "You've already told the cities that he's doing that. They don't care, and they don't want to do anything with it. That's it. There's no more." Now, that's pretty disturbing when the city hall doesn't care about violations of law occurring in the neighborhood, about hazards in their community. Now, that's quite dangerous behavior. He goes on to say, "If you don't like the City of Lancaster, to sell your house." They're choosing not to enforce that. Many multiple violations of law having to do with air quality. I mean, as we know, we have poor air quality right now due to the fires, and I want to thank the fire department and everyone fighting those fires right now, trying to give us some improved air quality. But we dealt with a lot of emissions due to basically a high volume of vehicles coming in and out for the sole purpose of repairing auto body, painting shop. I mean, just ridiculous amounts of smog and emissions coming out and paint out into the neighborhood. Our trash not being picked up because there's so many vehicles surrounding our neighborhood. Trash, the waste management can't pick up our trash because cars from this, in this case, a particular group home, being blocking our trashcans. Now, I heard someone mention, you know, an investment or anything like that. Now, I'm no legal expert or anything like that, and I don't know what was going on that was being said, but I could probably say I'm no legal expert again, but maybe this appropriation of funds, because when you call for code enforcement and they say they don't care, you've already made the report, and they don't want to do anything with it, that's it. They're choosing not to enforce that? I don't know if our code enforcement dollars are being used appropriately.
Your time's up. We'll look into it, all right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just for the record, I did have the Air Quality Board. He talked to me at Criminal Justice. I did talk with the city manager in regards to it. The Air Quality Board did have people sent out, and they didn't see any violations either.
Thank you.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, ladies and gentlemen. Excuse me. Can you hear me now? Okay, good. Do you want to hear me now?
We're on Verizon.
I just wanted to kind of go over, because at the last meeting, I mentioned about the MetroLink property not being cleaned as best they could, but I can't remember the gentleman's name, the head of the AVTA, Mr.?
Lenningel.
Yes. He did come up to me and said that they were going to be power washing it and keeping it a little bit cleaner. And I just, I haven't had a chance because I was in Michigan last week. And I don't know if anybody's been to Michigan. I'm sure a lot of people have. That was my first time, but I went to Lake Michigan, and I had to get in the water. That water is, oh my goodness. And I had to taste it because I didn't know it was not salty. It's regular water. I mean, it was wonderful. It was a wonderful trip. I was in a farm, taking care of cows and horses and chickens. So I just thought I'd share that with you, and thank you very much, and God bless you all.
Thank you, Fran.
Am I in or am I out? No. I can't see what I'm doing.
Fran, don't break it.
Oh, really? Broke it.
Did Mark break it?
Yeah, he broke it. City side.
I'm so sorry, but no.
All right. Send us the bill. We'll take it out of his paycheck.
Oh, no, he doesn't want to go on.
Mark, it was fine until you walked up there.
I could use help.
You know what? Here, that'll kick, but that even doesn't want to work. Uh-oh. Pull these back. Pull those back, and this back here, and then just push me, you know, push me back there. Then like...
Does that help you?
Huh? No, they're going to bring me on you. Yeah. Thank you, everybody, for your help. Everybody. I'm going to divide it up.
Let's make certain we take care of her. She gets home okay, I don't want her... All right. Great. Thank you. Okay, council comments. Raj?
Mayor Paris, yes, I would like to give a quick update on alcohol ordinance. We met a couple of weeks back with the city staff and a bunch of owners, and we had a great meeting. Everybody shared their great ideas, and I think we are going to the right direction. I just wanted to thank you, Toy. She took a lead on this whole project, and then she's doing really good. And anything I could add, Toy, on this?
No, not really, other than, Mayor, you're right. There is a method to your madness, and the selection of Mary Truchelle as the community group leader was an excellent one.
I can say madness. You can't say madness. She was paraphrasing, you see.
No, Mary is great. She's very knowledgeable. She's very patient, very professional, so she really is kind of bringing the group together and even educating us on some things. And I certainly want to thank Councilmember Molly for his direction and leadership in this, and I look forward to bringing what I believe are going to be, it will be a responsible solution to the issue.
Terrific. That's your first project, right?
No. Yeah, no.
First one I gave you.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. So what other projects have you done? You've only been here a couple of months.
She went on vacation.
Wow. You didn't.
We are quite busy, working on lots of projects.
You didn't. He went on vacation already?
I did. It was part of the offer to leave Santa Clarita.
Okay, I get that. I get that. We recruit a lot of employees. All right. Good. Thank you.
I have a comment.
Yes.
Can we put on the next council agenda, a talk in regards to the metro tax?
Sure. Just discussion and possible action.
Uh-huh.
You want another tax?
No, I want to oppose the metro tax. I want to oppose and make sure that the entire community understands why we're opposing the metro tax, the sales tax increase, and what they haven't done for us in the past and what they're not doing for us in the future.
Okay, good. Randy, you're supposed to be the tax watchdog.
So you want me to watch these taxes get voted on?
I want you to tell me when they're coming.
There's a bunch of them. We've got park tax, we've got Marv's tax.
Marv's tax is not a tax.
It's not.
Marvin's tax.
Marvin's tax.
Maybe we don't need to name the shelter. We got another name. That's good, Randy.
We have that marijuana thing coming up. There's money laundering you mentioned, and since the federal government says that it all has to be done through cash and not banks, there's going to be an awful lot of cash floating around, so...
Hey, we could launder it for them. You know, we could take a percentage. We could...no?
No.
No? Look, you know, you've got one of the elected representatives up here trying to reduce taxes, and never mind.
Yeah, they're going to be so stoned.
It's going to work. Okay, what else we got? Anything? We all good? Okay. The city council will adjourn in memory of Lou Bozegian and Sharon Runner. Mr. Bozegian served in World War II and received the Purple Heart at the age of 19. His love for the Antelope Valley showed in his amazing community service and dedication. Some of his accomplishments include serving as mayor, city councilman, planning commissioner. He was president and a board member of Desert Haven for 50 years, was president of the Lancaster Performing Arts Foundation for 25 years, Gavir's Broker of the Year, American Cancer Society Ambassador of the Year, the recipient of the Gavir Imager Award, the Henstraw Award, the Athena Award. In 2013, he was named Mayor Emeritus. The loss of Mr. Bozegian to our community cannot be measured. He will be truly missed by his community, his family, and his friends. You know, if we were to add up every dollar Lou raised for this community, it would be in the millions and millions, and that is really hard to do in this community, but he was relentless. One of the reasons I know he was relentless is because until I wrote him a check, he wouldn't leave me alone, time after time after time. He was truly, his death is truly a loss to all of us. And right on the heels of Lou, Sharon Runner. Sharon Runner is an icon of this valley. What she accomplished is Sharon Runner helped found Desert Christian Schools and helped author Jessica's Law. Jessica's Law has saved more children and more women from being molested and raped than any law ever written. Before she did Jessica's Law, we had no idea who the threats were, where they were, how close they were to us, and in spite of all of the criticism of the law, it has saved more people. And, you know, think about that. Sharon Runner, with not a college degree, was able to change... Sharon Runner, with not a college degree, was able to change the world with that law. And she did it in spite of all kinds of opposition. You know what it takes to do an initiative in this state? I mean, to actually pass an initiative on the ballot to change something of that magnitude. And when she first said she was going to do it, I thought she was nuts. There's no way we can, I mean, you're just from Lancaster. And sure enough, she did it. But what, an unstated thing that nobody knew, is George and Sharon went into personal debt in order to get that initiative passed. And, I mean, I was involved in it to a certain extent, but they actually signed off personally on a lot of the money to get that initiative passed. It just took incredible commitment to the community. She served in the Assembly and the Senate, the state senate, representing Antelope Valley in ways too many to count. She's been called a dedicated and courageous community leader who loved the Antelope Valley, a tireless leader for public safety, education, and children's issues, and a true public servant. Mrs. Runner cared about people and showed in her tireless dedication to her community. She will be deeply missed by the local community and her family and friends. The city council meeting is adjourned until Tuesday, August 9, 2016, at 5:00 p.m. Thank you.